The whole meeting for Monday, March 28th. I do want to note for the record that all councilors are present. If you'll include that in our minutes without making a roll call. Thank you very much. Councilors, if you had an opportunity, you have before you the minutes of our previous meeting on February 14th. Could I entertain a motion and second for approval of those minutes?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposers, that item carries. So those minutes of February 16th, 2022 are approved. Looking at the agenda, councilors, we do have two items that are before us, and I would like to request that we flip those items. And so we will start with what's indicated as item number four on our agenda, and this is an update, which is a proposed resolution to strongly encourage use of pre-qualification specifications for C O B public works projects, forbid us to use workers and apprentices qualified through apprenticeship training programs certified by the U.S. Department of Labor. And our presenter for this particular item is Mr. Earl Hilliard, who is our Senior Director of Governmental Affairs. Could he?
What's the item?
All right, Mr. Hilliard, the item is before us, and could you just explain to us what this item entails?
Okay. Good afternoon.
Thank you.
I'm Peter Junior, and I serve as the Senior Public Affairs Officer for the Mayor's Office. So this resolution, what it would do is it would require, or actually would not require, but it would strongly encourage anyone who bid for projects and public projects in the city of Birmingham to use Department of Labor certified apprenticeship program and/or the Alabama Association of Apprenticeships. They are Department of Labor certified too, and they're closer. So what we're trying to do is, as y'all know, right now, we are under skilled workers in the state of Alabama. In the country right now, most countries, companies are saying that we're 50% under what we need. Last year alone, they did $250 million in Department of Labor to expand all of the pre-apprenticeship and apprenticeship programs. So what we're trying to do here is get in along with the trend. I know some of you heard President Biden speak last week or the week before, and he mentioned that there's lots of money in the infrastructure bill for pre-apprenticeship programs and apprenticeship programs. So this is in line with, they're saying, we need to do, help our skilled labor, to help bring our skilled tradespeople up to the part they need to be and to provide more opportunities for constituents like you in the city of Birmingham. If there are any legal questions, I have Julia Bernard on Red Ex, and I also have Bill Blackman from I B E W. I have Bill Blackman. Bill, come on up. And I have Joe Lee. And they have both of thousands of apprenticeships programs there here in Birmingham.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I believe that we've built Alabama and all this over the years because there's been a lot of talk about, as the baby boomers retire, we're gonna lose our skilled craftsmen. Let's hit us. We're there. And I believe this is a way that we can get behind actually rebuilding the next generation of skilled craftsmen, but without just throwing money at it so we got commercials that look good. This is actually a way we could do this with some teeth in it. Thank you all for listening to us about it.
Thank you, and sir.
Just to piggyback off of what Bill said, from a labor's perspective, we do a lot of things with our hands in bringing in some of the younger generation. We'd just like to have an opportunity to be on a level playing field. Well, that's our biggest request.
Thank you very much. Councilors, I don't have the pads in front of us to indicate who wants to speak, so would anyone like to ask questions or make any comments about this particular item?
I have a comment.
Yes, sir. Mr. Williams?
Thank you, Madam President. First of all, you know, I've been to both of you guys' places respectively, and I want to thank Mr. Hilliard and obviously Mr. Mayor for getting this in front of us. It was, you know, when we built Protective Stadium and when other larger projects have gone on, it is discouraging to see Tennessee tags and out-of-county tags as the people that are employed to build these large build projects that have taxpayer money tied to them. And so not only do we need to be, as a city, and I think that that is the direction of this ordinance, but not only do we need to be, as a city, building out our city and doing big build projects like Protective Stadium, but we also need to make sure that those that live in this city and in this metro area are reaping the benefits of that. And I think that both of you gentlemen, both of your shops, I think that, from what I've learned from my visits with y'all, I think that y'all would agree with that. So thank you for both of what you guys do, and Mr. Mayor, thank you for bringing this because it's been time and we need it.
Thank you. Madam Protim?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I'm so happy to see this done. We've been working for, what, three, three years to get this on the books, but as Council Williams mentioned, a lot of times the labor unions have expressed to us over and over again, we really want to work on this project. Who is hiring for this? And then by the time we figure it out, it's an out-of-town company, and they have been talking to us, they have been losing a lot of their members. I think it's important that we capture the different skill sets of the younger generation, Gen Z. So if you don't want to go to college, which, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Birmingham Promise says that now we can give you another option, that you can use your hands, that you can make really good money. I mean, your programs are great, like you get benefits, you get...
Benefits.
Oh, I know, I've been eating with y'all, I know that. But I think this is so good to help build up the backbone of America, and that's our labor unions. And also, my dad was a labor union worker back in the day, so of course, I'm gonna support this. And Mr. Hilliard, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, Counselor O'Quinn?
All right. I guess our buttons aren't working anyway. Yeah, so I really am thankful to see this as well and support it. The one thing, you know, that I wish we could accomplish or contemplate is, you know, those apprenticeship programs that are actually based in the city of Birmingham. I know there are some others that are in the region, but they're so far flung that they are really difficult for our, you know, constituents, our young people that live here in the city of Birmingham to actually participate in. So, you know, it's probably a bridge too far to ask in the context of this resolution, but, you know, I really wish that there was some way to, you know, not only give preference to these types of employers, you know, that participate in this, but also kind of incentivize our utilization of those that are actually in the city of Birmingham.
I was gonna say that part of that effort is actually in passing this first resolution, growing it, the hope that as and for more apprenticeship programs, people who use apprenticeship programs happens, they'll build more in Birmingham than if the programs here will grow. I'm sure they will.
Absolutely. And the majority of the building trades locals here in town, they are in the city of Birmingham. There are a few that are in the metro area that aren't in city limits, but the majority are in the city limits at this point. And I agree with you, we'll get where we got 100% there, I hope. That's the thought.
Yeah. And I'm not saying, you know, that they, they're, you know, physically have to be located here, but I'm saying, you know, that some of them are located in a, their training facilities specifically are located in a place that's really kind of inaccessible for our folks unless, you know, they're in a situation where they can, you know, they have their own transportation.
We are working with the Workforce Development Board, trying to set up individual training accounts and be able to help apprentices that are maybe in a difficult situation transportation-wise with possibly public transportation, some kind of way that we can help them move about the city and get job sites. Because on-the-job training is an important part of that training. I know I always learned better doing something with my hands than I did sitting reading it out of a book.
Looking at our labor training facility, which is around the corner here over the Richard and Erickson Boulevard, it's really been a task for us just to fill it because, you know, we just can't attract the talent that we want. And as you mentioned, getting people to the job, we collaborated with the Dana Group, the Dana Project, and we've actually placed some of their employees, their members out there on jobs. So we're steadily trying to build that infrastructure up to where we can get our training facility filled and place people, retain them, and that's the credit for that.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor O'Quinn. Counselor Tate?
Thank you, Madam President, and I want to first commend Mr. Hilliard for taking us on the tour, and Ms. Mayor Woodfin and his team. And so my uncle was a, you know, I believe in trades, my uncle, and Mr. Hilliard knows my uncle really well, Philip Hatcher, the late Philip Hatcher, who had Hatcher Appliance in L and N City for a long time, and he was able to, you know, train people and have people work for his air conditioning refrigeration company, and my dad was a cabinet maker. And so it's a joy to see the work that Bill and yourself, Joe, you all are doing. And so just really want to, you know, do a better job in making sure that we promote it, you know, in the community. So I'm definitely gonna be tooting the horn and saying it loud and getting, you know, some people, because it's a great opportunity, you know, for individuals to learn these trades and then come out with good paying jobs. So thank you all, and keep doing the good work.
Thank, thank you. Yes, Counselor Protim?
I have a question for, I guess it's for...
Hold on, we do have one more counselor.
Probably is more for Mr. Hilliard and Mr. Mayor. I know we had, this may have been pre-pandemic, we had talked about trying to connect the labor unions, apprenticeship programs, the Birmingham Promise. Is that, how's that going?
I actually remember our conversation. Go ahead.
I won't carry the weight of not getting that done to this point because as we started talks COVID hit, we kind of went our separate ways, and we just, I haven't gotten back on my feet enough to carry forward to that. But I definitely, we're definitely interested in getting Birmingham Promise connected with our apprenticeship.
Madam Protim, these are friends. So I first want to say, just publicly thank y'all. First of all, for not only holding us accountable, but making sure we got over the line and getting this done. Two, I want to thank the council for lifting this up and being active partners in making sure we find ways to continue to support our local unions, and then making sure it connects to the youngest generation. Related to your question of the Birmingham Promise, I'm not gonna let him take all of that. I think coronavirus hit, and I think both sides just have to pick that ball back up and get it rolling again. We paused on it on our end alone and just make sure we got this over the finish line. I think getting this over the finish line, we can go back to the table. That organization, as you know, publicly announced new leadership. We can get that ball rolling again.
Okay, because the Birmingham Promise is already awesome, but I think it'd be very well-rounded because you're literally giving the youngest generation every option, like you're telling them, there's no excuse for you not to have a job. There's no excuse for you not to go to college. So I hope to see this done. This wasn't anything about you, but I was just, I hadn't heard anything, and so I was just wondering how that was going. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Protim. Just two more councilors would like to ask questions, please. Counselor Abbott?
Thank you. I just have one question. This thing's got its mind of its own. The question is, is the reason for the language "strongly encourage" because we cannot force the issue? We cannot make it a requirement? Is that why?
Actually, if you look at the, what is the fifth paragraph, the law of Alabama actually does allow us to establish certain prerequisite requirements, so we could force it, but right now, right now, with the way the situation is with the city, the way our contracts are, there are changes that need to be made, and things are made if we were to require it. And this is the best effort. We discussed the length of the unions, we discussed the length of other pre-apprenticeship programs, and this is the best way to proceed at this point. And honestly, in about one year, we should revisit that point, we could require it.
Okay. Thank you. That's it. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. Counselor Moore?
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you, because I know I had an opportunity to have you all to come to the Education Committee and to speak on, you know, the different things that you all are teaching over there. And I know when I got a chance to visit the facility, it was one of the first times that I really learned about you all's program and just the low barrier of entry to most people to get involved. And I was trying to figure out, like, why the scenes weren't busting down off your walls because it should have been more people in your program. And so I'm excited to see this and definitely supported and looking forward to all the great things that are gonna come as a result of it. Thank you.
Thank you all. And councilors, I really want to appreciate the fact that you took the time to take the road trip to see what's going on over there. I know that we, this is probably the second or third time, I know it was one of my first visits as a counselor, and then we had our new group that we're able to go over. So I thank you for what you do. I want to echo what Counselor Protim said, and I don't want to make this go over longer than needed, but I do, I'm very encouraged by the fact that not only do we want our students or our residents to be college-ready, but career-ready. And this is a great opportunity where you can come out of college and, I need a plumber or I need an electrician, and let me tell you, you're gonna have, they make some pretty good money by the time they leave your house fixing something. So I appreciate you for that. So thank you very much. Councilors? Go ahead. Go ahead, Woods. I know you got something to say. Anything?
Sure, I'll add something. I don't mind. But no, really excited as they leave, but really excited about this work and want to appreciate everyone who helped get it across the line. I think the truth is, there are like tremendous opportunity created in this entire industry, and so kind of what Madam Protim was hitting on, if we just create so many pathways for young people to matriculate, you know, I think we can ensure that they all get to something positive. So definitely think we need to look at this, continue to look at this, you know, disparity study, follow back up on this in a year, and think we have a lot of opportunities to kind of control the number of pathways and access to them here locally. So thank you, Madam President.
Thank you very much. I don't know if we took a motion or a second just to get that.
Yes, we did.
Wonderful. So now I'll call for the vote. All of those you in agreement with item number four, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposers? That item passes. Thank you all. And again, thank you to the mayor and his team and Mr. Hilliard and the council for bringing this before us. The next item, and I believe that's why we have a lot of interest here in the chamber this afternoon, is that Mayor Woodfin and his team have provided results for us from the F Y 2021 Financial Audit Report, and we also asked for information regarding, since we're talking about money, let's just go on and keep talking about it. So we wanted to also get an update on the lodging tax and the Birmingham Fund. So it's your show, Mr. Mayor and Mr. Mitchell. Thank you.
Well, Madam, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good afternoon, Madam President. Madam Protim and the entire city council would be with you this Monday afternoon. We've got a lot to share with you this afternoon, but I want to start with some thank yous. My first thank you was actually to you. If you recall, this audit is actually for the budget year of July 1, I'm sorry, yeah, July 1 of 2020, that ended June 30th of 2021. I think if my memory serves me correct, this will be called the COVID budget, where some, a lot of different decisions were made, and some of these audit returns were not what we were expecting. But that was through our, and just making the best decisions to be fiscally sound and continue to be fiscally sound. And so, one, I want to thank y'all for that. And two, this finance department back here that's sitting in the back on purpose. But I'm looking at Kevin and I see his entire team, I want to publicly thank y'all as well. Then the third group, this is probably the coolest group to think, don't be mad at me, council, but this Shepherd Harris and Associates. This is an all, this is 100%, y'all. This is a 100% black female-owned firm. And they're the first to do this for the city of Birmingham. So I've seen them, and I want to say thank y'all as well.
The financial activities that I will yield the floor to Chaz Mitchell, Kevin Moore, the
auditing team and the finance team, they go in detail about in a minute. I just set it up for them. We experienced a significant operating surplus of approximately $53-plus million. They'll go into the detail of how we got here, but let's just say that sales taxes were not what we projected. And even though a lot of things were closed, that you couldn't physically walk in, S S U T and online shopping wasn't significantly high, and there are other areas in here they're going to detail why it was the case of having this. And then I want y'all to ask any questions you have before we go on to additional conversations with, that includes the $3, as well as the Birmingham Fund and other things we want to talk about today. So with that, I want to pass it back to Chief Mitchell, who's gonna do his presentation right there.
Thank you, Madam President. Counsel, good to see everybody again. Just so we can hit the highlights of what we're trying to go, we can go over the lodging tax first and then the Birmingham Fund, and then we'll go into the substance and meat of why we're here, is about the 2021 audit. So right around lunchtime, I sent you all the update to the lodging tax. As you know, through the end of February, we are right at close to $1.2 million in that surcharge that we did, the $3 per room per night. So we're trending almost above budget just for that one line item through February 2022. So that's a testament to the council for approving that and just pretty much allowing us this space to host events and certain other things that bring revenue to the city. So we're thankful, and if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Councilors, any questions regarding the lodging tax and the benefit that we saw from there? Questions? Sorry. Thank you, Mr. Mitchell.
So the next one, this also, I sent this in the email, was about the Birmingham Fund. Of course, if you recall, to the new council members, the Birmingham Fund is from the sale of the waterworks proceeds that we did a couple, not a couple of years, but a long time ago, just before pretty much everybody on here, except for you here.
Even before.
Before you.
Before me.
So we keep those proceeds and those funds in the region's account, where we pretty much use that to make money off the bond, the stock market, bond market, and of course, it's performance-based, and it does pretty well based on the conditions of the market. I know in the actual presentation that we have of the audit, they'll go more into depth of how much money is in there, I think from the, because it's a quarterly report, so the one that we sent you was at the end of December. So once we have the end of March, you'll get more updates. So I think right now it sits at $108 million. But like I said, the finance team will go more in-depth in the presentation about the actual fund balance of the Birmingham Fund.
All right, thank you. Councilors, any questions about the Birmingham Fund? Yes, Ms. Abbott?
I just want to point out, it was the sale of the industrial waterworks, not the waterworks. And it was so long ago that I don't remember it.
I might not have been even born then, so I don't...
Yes, thank you. Ms. Clark, thank you.
What's the city's policy, Madam Chair of Mayor, about how we use the Birmingham Fund?
So it's twofold, and I can answer this. It's starting stipulation that the council approved a policy for the Birmingham Fund that allows us to use a certain allocation of the Birmingham Fund to kind of offset the stuff that we do in the general fund, and that's up to 5% every fiscal year. So we're allowed to take up to 5% out of the Birmingham Fund and place it into our general fund to kind of just help subsidize or just use it just for, the use to just do basic city services. Now, anything above that 5% allocation will of course have to be approved by the council, and that will be considered an emergency appropriation.
Which we did. And the 5% is regardless of performance?
It's based on what's available, so it'll be 5% of the available balance. So right now, it usually trends between $4.5 million, $5 million a year.
Okay.
If we wanted to use that as a funding source.
Thank you. Does that help clarify the use and the stipulations we have for the use of that money? We have used exercise that just recently or before in order to help us go after, was it bond money or?
Yeah, I think that was the last, and then one time we used it because we were trending low in our claims budget for the office of the city attorney, so we had some emergency appropriations that we needed to do, and that actually helped us shore up that shortfall.
All right.
But we also have required that the money be paid back into the fund so that it does not...
Correct. So the, and to add to Ms. Abbott's note, when the council approved the '22 budget, we reduced our allocation for the Birmingham Fund just to replace that money that, you know, we noted that we would do at a good faith.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Thank you. Thank you so much for those two reports. Now we'll get to the audit, right?
I guess the reason why we're here now. So as the mayor noted, that the 2021 budget was considered our COVID budget, so we had a sense of just unknown when we presented that to the council, because, you know, we had the governor's orders that allowed us to basically shelter in place for a long time, and just this mayor and this council did many initiatives to make, you know, the city of Birmingham resilient with developing small loan programs for small businesses, eating the streets to allow people more comfort to eat outside instead of inside, just a whole host of things that the council and the mayor have agreed upon, just to try and stimulate the economy. And I think we reached a point now where, as we're noting, that we had a surplus in this budget just because of certain things that we instituted to allow us to get to this point. As the mayor noted, and I would like for them to come up, is the audit team, our independent auditors, the Connie Shepherd Harris team, so I just want y'all to put a face to a name so Ms. Shepherd and her team can come up and introduce themselves. So this is, this is a game changer for us, because we always had capacity issues, and this was one of those times where we said, hey, let's not take a chance, but know that the work will be quality. So we chose this firm knowing that they had the capacity, the thrust in everything that they do to give us a good audit. So I would like for her to introduce herself and just so, like I said, you can put a face to a name.
Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Connie Shepherd Harris. I'm the president of Shepherd Harrison Associates. I've been downtown, oh, this is one of my senior artists, Courtney Anderson. We've been in Birmingham for almost 12 years, but as Shepherd Harrison Associates for over 28 years. Like Chief Mitchell said, we are not new to Birmingham, but this is the first time that we, not new to auditing the city of Birmingham as a part of the city of Birmingham, but the first time we've been selected as the main auditors. So we'd like to thank you guys for that opportunity. It was a very good audit, it was a clean audit, and I think you, Chaz, we go over all the findings, well, not findings, the results of that audit.
Thank you very much. We're very excited to see both of you here. I'm glad that the mayor and his team had the good sense to get these ladies to perform this for us. It's no surprise we're here for Women's History Month, so Ms. Tate and I were in the event, we won't call the name of where we were, because I could really say something here, but you know where we were. But I would say we're excited for the work that you've done and the results that we see, and it's just, again, being committed to work with the best of the best. So thank you all very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam. Thank you. Thank you. So the second team I would like to bring up, and I know we'll get into the report, but I just want you to see how the science is being made, really. So I'm gonna bring up Chief Kevin Moore, our chief financial officer, and our internal city finance team that helped on this audit to get to where the point we are. And then we'll get into the substance of the actual audit and our recommendations to this council about the recommendations of the surplus. Chief Moore?
I messed it up.
You probably need to just take it out.
You might just take it out. It gets worse.
Definitely gets worse. Kind of typical.
I definitely want to take this opportunity to introduce our team. I think it's very important for you all to know who is working on your behalf or for the city's behalf on a daily basis. Of course, you all, I know you all know our deputy chief financial officer, Mr. Aaron Saxton, Mr. Kevin Parker, and Ms. Ann Murphy. They're both chief accountants in the finance department, and they work diligently with Shepherd Harris and Associates as we put together their audit. We also have new team members in the back that are shy to sit in the back. Ms. Sanji Campbell is now deputy director of finance, many years of experience, certified public accountant. And we also have Ms. Diana Bolden, who is our budget management. And so just wanted to make sure you all knew the team members that are part of this work. The interesting part about it is, we talked about Ms. Shepherd, Connie Harris. I began my career working, Connie. I began my career working, Connie, and so I think it's important to know that she has produced, not only her ability to perform audits, but she's also building accountants within the city of Birmingham. Definitely wanted to say that. You want us to go ahead and get into it?
So Counsel, we'll go into the presentation. Before you have the actual PowerPoint presentation, if you have any notes as we go through, just let us know if you have any questions, and we'll make sure we answer those.
Thank you. We'll just pretty much try to let you proceed, and then we'll come back with our questions, unless you all feel at that moment you just need to stop. Thank you.
Well, first thing, we do want to piggyback off what the mayor and Chief Mitchell had said. 2021, fiscal 2021 was definitely a COVID year. And in our budget process, we did budget conservatively. And so based on that, our revenues did come in above what we expected. Interestingly enough, our sales tax increased as well as our occupational tax increase for the year. And you all remember, a lot of people were doing online sales, so our SSUT increased as well. If you look at, I apologize, we don't have page number, but if you look at the graph here, you'll see the percentage of our business taxes for the city of Birmingham. Sales taxes, 34%, occupational taxes, 27%, and use taxes, 16%. If you go on to the next page, you will actually see from year to year, 2019, 2020, 2021, and I'm going to specifically look at 2020 and 2021, our occupational tax increased for about $5 million.
Can you just show us what page, is that the right page?
I'm sorry.
Next slide.
Cody, it's the next slide.
Next slide, I'm sorry.
There you go.
Yes. And so if you compare 2020 to 2021, our occupational tax, which is, excuse me, our sales tax, which is in blue, increased $5 million. Our occupational tax increased about $4 million. So if you would really think about that over a COVID year, that's actually pretty good and as well as, one of the things I do want to compliment, because, you know, sometimes we don't talk about the work of our predecessors. I do want to give Mr. Saxton and Mr. Lester Smith credit for budgeting conservative, because we were in tough times, and we didn't know how we were going to fare from, all our money comes from taxes, pretty much. Majority of our revenue comes in from taxes. And so I think the positive thing is, and the city has historically been very conservative as it budgets for its revenue. You know, one thing, we also have to make sure that we're all paying attention to occupational taxes, which there's a lot of conversation right now about threat to occupational tax. And so we just need to make sure that we understand that occupational tax makes up a heavy amount of our revenue that we receive in the city of Birmingham. I want to, a lot of people work from home, so, you know, they don't want to pay occupational tax. We're, you know, we're mandating and we're making the requirement that your businesses in Birmingham, you have to pay occupational tax regardless of where. So we can get into expenses. One of the things I think is important to note is historically, our personnel cost is around 78% of our expenses for the city of Birmingham. In 2021, personnel cost is about 72%. So there are a couple of things the team and I talked about today that's important to note for you all to understand why those expenses went down. Again, we were in COVID years, so we made some decisions that a lot of, to be honest with you, they weren't favorable to our departments. So we had, we had to continue to have vacancies in our department. That's one of the reasons why personnel costs went down. Second, we cut positions. Funded vacant positions at step one. So if you think about it, in our grade, in our pay scale, normally we would fund positions at a higher step than step one. And so by going back to step one, you save money. So for instance, step one may be 40,000 starting out on a salary. Step four may be 48,000. Budgeted everything at a step one. The other thing, for any positions that wasn't filled at the beginning of the fiscal year, vacant positions, we only funded those positions at half a year. So six months, those positions were funded. So if you really look at it, our personnel cost went down some FY 2021. That actually is the gist of your revenues and expenses. Like I said, cost personnel makes up 72% of your expenditures. You know, that's basically where we make our decisions. Do have additional line items, boys and age, 66% of the expenses that the city pretty much, like I said, personnel is a large expense, largest expense. One of the things I do want to make sure that the council is aware of is, as we end, getting close to ending FY 2022, FY 2023, going to be a couple of costs that you will see increase over this year, next year. It's going to be fleet expense, which we'll deal with, cars, and gas, and diesel. Those costs are coming in pretty high, even just from April, I think, April to June, we're having to allocate another 1.2 million dollars to cover those costs. So I just want you all to know that this board is having an impact on our finances as well. So I just want to make sure you are aware of the things that are touching the budget and the things that we have to be mindful of. The last thing I want to comment on is that there's been a lot of work to help in our, and I'm gonna let Mr. Saxton speak on fund balance in Birmingham. Is there's a lot of, you know, we did a lot of work on our pension. Still continue to contribute to our pension. Even with that work, we still have a $390 million. I just want to let you all know, we're doing the work, but we still have more work to do. Department is committed to ensuring finances are. Well, thank you all for your attention. Mr. Saxton.
Good afternoon, counselors.
Good afternoon.
As our CFO has already come for me and talked about the 2021 budget that was passed, I just wanted to remind the council that 2021 budget was not a balanced budget, which we projected at the time. Regional budget was passed that $20 would come out of reserves. But thus, our tax collections came in strong. We didn't have to draw any money from. Following up the general fund balance increase by the amount of that surplus, the driver of that was the strong tax collections. Your debt service reserve fund balance increased $17 million. On the revenue side, we get our revenue for the debt service reserve fund from avaloreum tax revenue. And the expenditures go out in the form of debt service payments. If you remember, we financed a large percentage of our bonds outstanding, which realized about $3 million in savings last year. So that helped to increase that reserve fund balance. Also, the Birmingham Fund balance increased by 16.4 million dollars. That's a result of our investment, strong investment. 75% of equity investments.
So, Madam President, I know this, of course, the numbers are not the most sexiest thing ever, but we want to at least paint a picture to you just to show that, you know, to our core values of making sure that we're effective and efficient and accountable with our finances, and we don't bring anything to the council that we know that would hurt us in the end. So that's a result of just why we have this surplus. That was a tough year. I think we made it up in the 2022 budget, which we're currently in. And I think if the mayor wanted to talk about the surplus, I sent everybody a memo yesterday that just kind of outlined some of the reasons why we have the surplus and how we want to use the surplus. Of course, we don't want to take up all the surplus, because we'd like to have something in the background, just in case something catastrophic happens. But we feel like the recommendation that we presented to the council in that memo is very important. So Council President, if you wanted us to go line by line, I'll let the mayor talk. But it was two factors that we wanted to do with the surplus, was want to take care of the employees, which we know is very important. And the second part of it is just to continue to knock on our core values of neighborhood revitalization. So we were intentional in the way that we kind of separated the two, that showed the non-neighborhood revitalization uses and the neighborhood revitalization uses, because we feel like both of them are very important to the city and the city council. So Mayor, if you wanted to jump on, but thank you all.
Madam President, I kind of want to respect your flow. So if you want to exhaust any questions on the audit before we talk about the surplus, we'll yield.
I appreciate that. I would like to, and we want to thank again our auditors and our finance team. I know for all of us who were present, who were in those budget talks for, and I love the way we're calling it now, our COVID budget, that was a hard one for us. And I had to make some difficult choices and felt we, at that time, really need to be very succinct in how we wanted to base that budget and build that budget. So I thank you all for that, and we, again, thank the auditors. Counselors, do you have any questions about how we got to this point, as far as what's been explained to us, how we came about that surplus? Any questions, anyone would like? Start with you, Counselor Williams.
Thank you, Madam President. And then this might be just something that y'all emailed me, but the market value of the Birmingham Fund is of June 21st. I was just curious what our current market value.
Yeah, Mr. Saxton, because I had a feeling that that question was going to come up. So I think he pulled the market value as of today, so.
As of today, 108,114,254 dollars.
Awesome, thank you. I'm glad that I've asked that enough where you knew to have that pulled.
Thank you. Any other questions from counselors? And we're just talking at this point on how we got here, and the explanation, Mrs. Abbott. And just for your reference, you do have a copy of that email in front of you if you want to reference back to it. Yes, ma'am, Ms. Abbott?
Well, I really didn't have a question. I wanted to make a comment about our auditors. You know, the whole time I've been on the council, we have spent time talking about building the capacity of minority firms so that one day they could take over and be the lead dog. And it's finally happened. I mean, this is the first, y'all are number one. I mean, this is the first time that I can, this is the first company that I have seen it happen. It might have happened very quietly, and I might not have noticed something, but this is the one that I noticed. So I just want to say, you know, kudos to y'all, because you built your capacity, and now you're the lead dog. And it's a great thing. And I just think that they deserve to be really honored for that, because they stuck with it. I mean, it's been 20 years. But so, I just had to say that. I've been thinking about it, and I thought, well, I shouldn't just sit here and think about it. I should say it. So congratulations.
Thank you, Mrs. Abbott. I know we all echo that. Mr. Counselor Woods?
I'll say, one, you know, nothing gets past you, Counselor, but I am excited to y'all have, get this opportunity. I mean, they're actually my accountants, so I have great faith in your ability. So really excited to see this happen here and just, you know, look forward to, I think, seeing what's possible and more and more people get opportunities. But I think it is a really important message, and Mayor really stepped up and made that call. But, you know, we want to make sure that people in Birmingham know they have opportunity here. And so I think this is a significant milestone, and thank you, Counselor Abbott, for pointing it out.
Thank you. Counselor Quinn?
The lights have gone away. All right. So I think we'd be negligent if we didn't recognize the contribution of our national leadership in basically rescuing the country with the CARES Act, and then, you know, subsequent funding. I mean, it cannot be understated how impactful that was. I mean, I remember sitting up here and Lester Smith telling us that we were going to have a $62 million shortfall, and it didn't happen, and it didn't happen in large part because of the CARES Act. So I would encourage people to keep that in mind as they head to the polls for these midterm elections. It's, leadership matters, and those guys literally saved the country.
Thank you, Dr. Quinn. Ms. Clark?
I just wanted to ask about these three funds that are summarized, the general fund, the debt service reserve fund balance, what it's a fund balance instead of a fund, but I don't know. It's language, I don't really understand it, it's new. So Birmingham Fund balance. So is the debt service reserve fund, that's from avaloreum taxes, someone said? So can that only be used for debt service?
It can only be used for debt service right now, but there's something. Want to be put on bond referendum pretty soon.
Okay. So I was wondering, since we don't have a capital budget, could the surplus in this, is this like the sinking fund? Is that the, what we call sinking fund? Do we have, you know, the capacity to issue bonds to have a capital budget, I guess is my question? Or are we at our debt ceiling or something else happening?
So I don't want to go into the weeds, but to answer your question, we have the capacity to float a bond, we're not at our debt limit, but I think that's another conversation that the mayor and the council needs to have for.
Okay, that's fine. I just wanted to know the implications of this. So, yeah.
Good standing.
Yeah.
Implication is we're in very good standing.
Okay.
And, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
It's a testament to our credit rating, also the reason why we have all the funds the way they are in good standings, to allow us to be able to go to the market and get a good rate to float a bond or warrant or anything for the future. But that's, that's pretty much why we did it like that.
Okay. Well, thank you. And I think I, I think I get this that you presented, so thank you.
Thank you. Counselors, any other questions?
One.
Ms. Abbott?
Well, maybe two. So the sinking fund, do we, are we waiting for our credit rating for the city to improve before we consider going back to the bond market to borrow any more money? Or, or do we have so much money to spend right now that we're concerned if we borrow any more, we won't be able to spend it all because there'll be so much?
Well, definitely not your "or." So your "or" is just not on the table. I'm going to speak to this, and I'll let the professionals chime in if I'm off the mark or just want to add some context. We came into office, you all were at the event, but we did the 100-day event last Thursday. We did an event four years ago. The pension, y'all, was like just at a really, really bad place. We used that, you know, that analogy of kicking the can down the road. So we kicked it so long, there was nowhere else to kick it, and we had to pick it up and deal with the issue. Well, you know, the way the, I don't know if it was Surbanes, Oxley, or some, whatever federal law changed, that our pension became a serious liability for us. And our credit was downgraded, and that affected our ability to go to the bond market, and if we went at what type of level, would we be taxed, et cetera, et cetera. And so I think in what we attempted to deal with those first four years is one, solve for that pension, but that not only had a long-term positive of supporting and making sure we did what was necessary for our employees, if and when we were ready to go to the market, it would also have a positive ripple from the standpoint. the standpoint that our credit rating scores go, it went up. In addition to that, refinancing some things that y'all approved. So now that's a second hurdle cleared, right? First hurdle, our pension. Second hurdle, refinancing some debt and clearing some debt off our books. The third hurdle was getting our budget right. Now all that's balanced. I think when we talk about some of these infrastructure issues, where we want to make a serious impact, when we talk about our fire stations and parks and rec centers and street paving, when you want to go at a lump sum of infrastructure, this will allow us the ability to do that. And we may think there's enough funds and opera funds. There are not. You may believe that with these infrastructure dollars, we can just get money, but it's a competitive process. There's no guarantee all of that money will be out there available to 2026. One pot, two pots. We got our general fund, a third pot. But we do believe at a certain point, I want to sit down with y'all and discuss, do we want to go to the bond market? What are these, what's something we can have, some things we can have some serious impact on? And I believe we would need to go to the market for that. But we will be in a good position if and when we decide to put it before the public through bonds or just through us as warrants. I hope that answered the question.
Thank you. Does that help, Mrs. Abbott?
Yeah. And when do we get another review by the rating agencies of our bond rating? What time of year does that come?
It's really dependent on if we do any kind of refinancing or refunding. We just went through one a couple of months ago that put a couple of them back at an upgrade and at stable lookout. So I think the last refunding that we did, January, yes, that was the last review. So I think we have those credit reports we can probably share with them if we got them. So we'll give you the reports.
Thank you. I think that would be helpful. Thank you, Dr. Quinn.
Yeah, that really covered it. It's not on. All right. Yeah, that covered it. That was my question was about the, you know, Moody's and the other rating agencies. You know, we did a lot, I feel like, you know, to try and improve our credit standing. And I hope that they have recognized that. So I definitely want to see those reports.
Thank you. Any other questions, councilors? All right. Mr. Mayor, now you're going to tell us what we can do with this?
What we want to with this council's blessing. You got these high-level categories of pretty much our employees. And then you got this other high-level category, neighborhood revitalizations and making investments in the community. If you heard earlier, for our employees, for every dollar we spend prior to the COVID budget, it was 78 cents. That took a dip that year in the low 70s. I think we know this current fiscal year, we're in, that ends June 30th, it went back up to the mid-higher 70s. I'm not sure if it's somewhere between 74 and 78 cents, but that's the range we're in of every dollar we spend on our employees, which leaves us right at a quarter for pretty much the external things we need to do to take care of neighborhoods and provide for our infrastructure. But even within those three quarters, y'all, our employees do a lot and they've done a lot. And I think that if you start back, I've mentioned this to a few of you all, but I haven't mentioned it to all of you, all nine of you together, but this is a good time to mention it. If you start back from July 1 of this current fiscal year, we end, again, that ends June 30th, we've attempted to do everything we can to continue to support our employees. It started with a 3% cost of living adjustment. You all supported a 5% merit increase. We saw for the pension, I think that was to the tune of a whole lot more millions. I forgot whatever crazy number that was. In addition to that, you all supported longevity pay for those who have been here for years. And if I'm correct, insurance was at no additional cost. So the employer, we absorbed that. And then the opera funds came out and the first thing we did again was take care of our employees at a 5,000 premium pay. And now we're in a position again with these type of resources from this, from our audit that has revealed a surplus. We are back to where we always are, which is if and when we come into resources, we should always take care of the people on the front line, which are our employees. We had an original number, but we wanted to get as high as we could, which is why before you, we have presented a 5% cost of living adjustment for our employees. We believe that is a good faith effort, not only to show our appreciation, but continues to make our wages competitive for our employees. We, unfortunately, we're not the federal government. We can't print money. I often want to remind us of the big picture here as well. When you do a cost of living adjustment, that's, you know, that's immediate impact. But we're not like a lot of employers. As an employer, right, the 10 of us, a lot of our investments are the long-term play as well, where our employees can't immediately see it. But we're making investments now for the long-term play. So when you see a 5% cost of living adjustment, is that a significant number? Yes. Do we wish we can make it whatever we want it? The answer is also yes. But when you talk about 75 cents of every dollar going at our employees, that's also the long-term play of making sure the pension is solvent, right? So you all are spending millions in that for those same group of employees. We're investing in longevity pay. We're investing in the merit increase. We're investing as the employer in the insurance. These may not be sexy things that our employees can see in the immediate, but these are still significant dollar investments of those three quarters of every dollar we spend. And so just that in isolation, before the next fiscal year starts, which is when we usually do our cost of living adjustment, I hope because we have this surplus, that this is something that you all can bless and we can show immediate impact to our employees who we believe 100% deserve this call. So that's the first point I start with. When you go into this list, everybody, before we talk about neighborhood revitalization, you see that, again, these are all dollars recommended with the exception of the World Games towards departments. If you have questions on the workers' comp, the medical exams, I know a memo was provided. Chief Moore just shared with y'all where we are with this, these gas prices and how it's juicing us and how we got to solve for not just our reserve, but just everyday point A to B related to our garbage trucks and our police vehicles and our Department of Transportation vehicles and our fire trucks and ambulances, et cetera. So that's that. You all have something here in this room we've been trying to solve for. Patrick McClain is here if you have questions, deeper questions on the cybersecurity. But again, detailing the memo. And then we have a new generation of employees that we have to solve for. I can wax on about this, but the short version is we have to be more aggressive as an employer on retention and recruitment efforts. And I know I got two public safety folk here that are serious about this topic. We want to do everything we can. I just left a fire recruiting graduation class today, y'all. It was impressive. I've been here for years, but they've told me the history here. That was the largest promotion class and the largest graduating class all in one. And so we have to continue to be on the front competitive edge of our recruitment efforts. And so this Birmingham Fire and Rescue Service retention and recruitment, those dollars you see are towards that plan. And then we get into, that's internal, right? So then we get into out here in the community. Y'all know that there's a competition between more grocery stores and street paving. Thanks to budget and finance today, Madam Pro Tem. Thanks to you, Mr. Chairman of Tomorrow Economic Development, you're supporting our efforts. Efforts there, you all approved setting aside $2 million fund a few years back. We keep putting money in that. But tied with number one is street paving, which is something all of y'all have had an appreciation for in each of your districts and collectively as a city. So this is a whopping $10 million that we want to support towards our continuation plan of street paving. And then we've had these conversations, I think they've gone before your committee, Madam Chairwoman, PIC, as well. Uniform trash bins, right? This has been a long time coming, but. No, 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 no. We're the trash team, not the trash lady. But think about this, the 10 of us had a meeting with neighborhood officers, what, about 90 days ago, 100 days ago, maybe? And part of what we talked about is how do we solve for keeping our city clean? We believe one of the ways that the people who do illegal activity, the people that do illegal dumping, the people that litter and the people that just aren't into what we're into, which is wanting to keep our city clean, unfortunately, they can blend in because a minimum of six days a week, we pick up trash. We pick up trash in any form. You put it out there, we pick it up. We believe the uniform trash bin does a couple of things. One, it solves for, we believe it's going to help us project keeping our city cleaner. But two, we got serious, serious, which is on here, workers' comp issues, where we have three employees on the truck, no uniform lift, no uniform trash bins, how those employees are exposed of potentially hurting themselves. To be clear, no one is losing their job here. But we do want to be more efficient, which is one of our core values in how we engage our refuge. And we believe this price tag, making sure we get a uniform trash bin to every single homeowner in our city, well, almost all homeowners because there are different rules for multifamily spaces. But the refuge, the city of Birmingham is responsible for collecting, y'all. We got to be more efficient. This is something I really, really hope y'all can support and be excited about. And then the rolling stock, bottom line for Department of Public Works and Department of Transportation, they need better vehicles to do the things we just described. When you break those vehicles down, you got real load of garbage trucks, four of those you see the price, you got two picker trucks, four automatic, was that, grades trucks, garbage, limb loaders, which we got to do a better job of that and articulating off-road trucks and DA Dozer, and I don't even know what that means, Joe. And then you got the Department of Transportation that needs a bridge truck, derrick truck, and the utility bed sign truck. Now, I can go into any detail more that I want to provide because I feel like I've talked a while, but I wanted to at least tell you those are our thoughts. Oh, and then the last thing, World Games. Nick Sellers, CEO, presented to you all some of the desires there to continue to make the World Games a successful event. And there was a request for the city of Birmingham to make more investments in it. As an administration, we wanted to support that, but we wanted to put that before you to see if we can get the council's blessing, which I think he did his part in coming to you separate from the administration and communicating to the council why this was important to support and invest in. And Chaz Mitchell, do I have, am I missing anything? That's high level, Madam President. We'll go as deep as you want.
Thank you very much. We do appreciate generating this information for us and bringing these items before us. As you said, they are in categories, they're the non-neighborhood, really assisting our staff and other entities that we'd like to support, as well as the neighborhood revitalization part of the, what you're putting before us to consider for use of these funds. Councilors, I'll just start around and ask if you have any questions or desire any further detail. We'll start with you, Counselor Quinn.
All right. Okay. So I understand the need for, specifically for recruitment and retention in Birmingham Fire and Rescue, you know, particularly for EMTs. Got it. I'm on board. My question is, is BPD? What, you know, specifically, what are we going to do for recruitment and retention for BPD?
So two things, Counselor. We, Chief Sparks has a meeting on cadence with the public safety leaders all the time. And then I sat down with everybody, with the departments. What you see here is immediate needs prior to June 30th. BPD is actually working on a retention, a very aggressive retention and recruitment plan as well. But we leave for the immediate, which I asked both Chiefs, Chiefs Moon and Chief Thurman, the same exact question. As we complete this fiscal year, so the remaining, all of April, May, June, so 90 days left in this fiscal year, what's your immediate? What can we solve for July 1? They didn't have the same, they didn't have the same immediate need. We're solving for BPD for the new fiscal year, which will also, finances will be towards a recruitment and retention plan. For our fire department, they could not wait to July 1. And so with these surplus funds, we wanted to get that, those dollars immediately to them so they can solve for that before July 1.
Can I keep going with my questions? On the uniform trash bins, my question is recycle bins, is it 100,000 trash bins and recycle bins? Or is it only trash bins?
So this is just for trash bins? We were kind of trying to phase in the recycling part. I think at this point, Mr. Josh Yates has a, almost like a plan that we're trying to analyze about the recycling to like an opt-in program for recycling that will save the city more money on the front end than instead of just giving everybody recycling. Of course, we want to promote recycling throughout our city, but of course, everybody doesn't recycle, it may be just a learning curve for people.
Madam President, if I can add to Chaz Mitchell's point, because I know this is a topic that he is not the only counselor that has an interest and passion in. I know Madam Pro Tem does. I know Hunter Williams does. I know JT Moore does. And if I actually went down this line, I know recycling is important to everybody here. But I asked the Department of Public Works a few years back, start tracking. Tell me where we are on a consistent basis and on a map. I think some of this is not new to what I'm about to share with y'all. If my percentage is correct, Josh Yates, wherever he is, he can tell me if I'm wrong. We are literally, as an entire city, only 21%, 21%. That is literally, percentage-wise, less than one out of every four people that recycle in our entire city, all 23 communities, all 99 neighborhoods. Now, that 21% is higher in certain areas than it is in others. It's higher in three. It's higher in two. It's higher in portions of six and it's higher in portions of five. And then it may be sprinkled in eight. And then maybe like whatever's less than a sprinkle in one, and I can go on and on for nine and four. I know that because I asked about it and then we looked, like you can see it. So we did our pilot program. The pilot program is going well. So there's a mix of what we want to do, Counselor, because this is your question. We believe the opt-in strikes the balance of one being fiscally sound, because if you just give everybody this recycle bin right now, we know what they would do. They wouldn't put recycling stuff in there. And so the opt-in allows us to still engage and at a certain point, come back to you how much those bins cost, but know what that cost would actually be, instead of today doing it for every home. What I'm learning about whether it's, I think it may be actually different with, and I'm sorry my answer is so slow, Madam President, I know we're in a public meeting. But this is a really important topic. When you have people that litter and when you have people that do illegal dumping, you may can probably use a little bit more might and force from a punitive standpoint for people that are doing illegal activity. But we can't force our way into people recycling. We want to encourage it. And I think the best way we encourage it is to be able to come back before this council if we want to put funds towards it and actually have an education plan. And that may be our better way of getting that 21% up. But in the short, in the short immediate, I'm sorry that we're not providing every household with the recycling.
I don't disagree with you. I don't disagree with you, and you know, I think in the near term, that's probably a good strategy. Because, you know, if you give people a recycle bin, you know, a lot of them are gonna put everything that they imagine is recyclable. You know, dirty peanut butter jars, your, you know, vacuum cleaner that's broke, that's not actually, it may be made out of plastic, but that doesn't mean that you can put it in a recycle bin. And certainly, you know, your deer carcass from the weekend hunting is not supposed to go in the recycle bin. And that, these are actual, real-world examples that we've heard from Birmingham recycling and recovery. So, yeah, you know, I get it. The one thing that I would say is that, you know, as we're working towards that goal of providing recycling bins for folks who want to opt in, it's important to remember that, you know, ADEM has grant funding for this. I mean, not only for recycling bins, but for anything related to waste. And, and, you know, that program is paid for through landfill tipping fees. So, I don't want us to say, okay, we got our trash, you know, bins covered and not lose sight. You know, I don't want us to lose sight of that opportunity to get additional funding for waste management, you know, by tapping into that.
Yes, sir. I just told the two chiefs, make sure I follow up on that, so I don't drop the ball.
And I do, I just, I know other counselors, I know our PIC counselor here is, wants to talk about this. I do want to echo, and I think you have consensus among us. We would, I don't want to leave the recycling piece. It doesn't have to be here per se, but I do want us to look at that because there is opportunity there for education and as a means of incentivizing our residents to use this program. And I do want to ask, I do have some residents in D7 that really would like to participate, but they don't get their recycling picked up all the time. And so that's very discouraging to them. They put it out and then they've got to go calling for a day or two to get them to come back and pick that up. So, some consistency in that as well.
So, I think, I think clearing this refuge hurdle allows us, me to go back to Josh Yates and the team that says, hey, this is a priority for the council and our citizens. You leaving us?
I am, I have a 6 o'clock meeting.
Understood.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I think this allows us to go back to our leadership and say, hey, let's figure, let's get this right. It's not right. And I'm acknowledging it's not right, but we can get it right.
Thank you. Counselor Protem, did you want to piggyback on that?
Oh, I got a lot of stuff. In 2019, Counselor Quinn and I, was that the same grant we tried to apply for? Was it, you remember 2019, when I first got on here, you told me about recycling grant? We actually tried to get a recycling grant. I don't know what happened, because Counselor Quinn, he found the information, he said, you know, helped me out, and the ball was dropped. So, I just wanted to be that if we go for this grant again, I know, well, Chief Mitchell was our COO, but I hope we don't, I hope we don't drop the ball with that. I do have a budget question. So, in the budget for this year, we allocate 300,000 for recycling bins. What's going on with that?
So, the funding is for the actual City Hall program to, you know, do the continuation to buy bins that have been damaged and replace them. We are still doing the same thing every year, we're trying to make sure that program and that pilot program keeps going. So, like, that's the short answer for that. I know that you want a more detailed answer for that, but I'll make sure that Mr. Yates gets something to the council.
Okay, because I know, like, what Madam President was saying. A lot of my residents will ask on neighborhood calls, well, how can I get a recycling bin? Even if it's just the small one. And they are correct. I hear all the time, even from my own family, they say, well, why recycle if it's not gonna get picked up? And I think that's really like a short-term goal that we can resolve right now. I don't know ways to do the routes, or they are calling or something, we got to figure it out so we can increase that number. Because I think it's higher than 21%. But people aren't going to recycle if, if you don't pick up. So, I don't think it's my unwillingness. I have a lot more faith in our residents when it comes to environmental issues. Counselors, as far as the uniform trash bins, and Chief Mitchell and I have been working on this a long time. COVID was another adverse effect on that. We were trying to get these trucks to help our employees, but it's been backlogged. The importance of the uniform trash bins, and Mayor Woofen didn't mention this, was number one, if you see people put out trash bags, you think they're always wild dogs. So, that's why you will see sometimes trash all along your street is because they don't put it in the trash bin. It's a lot deeper than, it's a lot deeper than what's on the surface. Also, our city employees, they injure themselves over and over again, because it's a little bit easier to deal with the bag. But a lot of times, people put very chemicals, explosive things in the bags, where things, chemicals have gotten in their eyes. Like, it's a lot, our employees have been harmed. So, this is a really great thing, and we have an ordinance that we're just waiting on to give to you all, that we require trash bags to go in the trash bins. And that's so important, because then we can go after people. And then we have to have an education piece, right? So, we need to remind people, you can't put out your trash until 5:00 PM the day before. And that helps out with our cleanliness as well. But recycling, I think there's just a lot of things we can do with that. Earth Day is coming up, counselors, that's the day that I plan on going in the schools and teaching the kids about recycling. I also have an idea, if we can afford it, I think we should get recycling bins in our schools. Because I think that, because I know when I was in law school, I saw the recycling bin in college. And so that made me more conscious to put my water bottles and everything in there. So, I think helping the kids out that way is good, too.
Yeah, just quickly, our best resolve, literally the best way of us increasing participation in recycling is the youngest generation. It won't be my generation or my parents or grandparents' generation who've been dealing with their trash the same way for, I mean, that's fixed behavior. But you can encourage the youngest generation. So, I think what you're saying, the best partnership is with the Birmingham City School System. And I think it would literally change.
That's okay.
How, how recycling is done in our city.
Thank you. And Dr. Quinn had not finished his questions, but, Tom, that's okay. I'm sorry, we wanted to get that recycling.
No, I want to give everybody a chance to ask a question. I think you can come back to me.
Right, Counselor Moore?
Real quick. Am I on? Okay. Real quick, so I see that there's a surplus or a remaining balance of 13 million. And I was trying to find out, where do like neighborhood projects play in that? Like, if there are, you know, like significant projects that need, you know, funding?
So, neighborhood projects can fall into an assortment of categories. It's not, it's not just one. You have our general fund, you have the capital budget that has existing projects where there may be money left, so money's left over. You got opera funding coming down the pipe, you got infrastructure dollars. We just spoke to the possibility to go to the bond market. And then you got our, what is it called, General Reserve, what is it? Bond refinancing, I just mentioned that. So, those are various categories for major projects. And I say that because sometimes you may have a big project and it literally may be more than, maybe millions of dollars. And you have to either pull from multiple of those different pots I named, or go to the market so you can have a lump sum, especially when you can bundle deals, right? So, if you, if you have an issue with the park in District 4, you have an issue with the rec center in District 2 or District 1, then we can go to the market for a significant amount of parks and recreation centers in our city. Or if you have, you've had one fire station complete, but you got all the fire stations that just need significant help in District 5, and I know in 8 and 9, where you have very outdated fire stations. So, again, those are multimillion-dollar projects. Multimillion-dollar projects usually fall in fire stations, parks, rec centers, and/or libraries. And for things like that, I would suggest, whether it's infrastructure, infrastructure pot, or going to the bond market with the whole package.
Thank you. Counselor Clark?
Thank you, Madam President. Just a few things, you know, to go back to the recycle question, I mean, issue, and the uniform trash bins, really excited about that. I do think that people won't have excuses if we provide the can. But, I mean, if something happens to it, I think it should be their responsibility to replace it from that point. I do feel like the opt-in is a really efficient way to deal with the recycling, because, I mean, I mean, I'm a big stickler for recycling. In fact, I got a lot of, you know, washed, already rinsed-out plastic in my house, you know, just waiting on the next recycle day. And sometimes I miss it, so I just keep it in the house. So, I think I'm just, anyway, hoarding recycling. But, but I feel like when, when the rolling stock goes all over town, just looking for those few people who recycle, that that's horribly inefficient. And so, if the people who opt in for a bin are the only locations they're going to, I think that's gonna really help, you know, make that process more efficient. And, and it, I don't know, I just, I struggle with it, because I want mine picked up. But then I don't want people, I feel like sometimes I'm the only one on the block setting it out. And are they riding up every street looking for a bin, you know? Wasteful. The other question I have is about street resurfacing. So, you know, I feel like this is something we really, really need to invest in, but I'm not sure that I know how to get a street on the resurfacing list. Or do we go out and rate all the streets? Do we rate all the streets in the city and prioritize them?
You want me to answer that, Carol, or you want? It's impossible to get a street on the list.
I mean, I saw some technology at this.
I wouldn't say it's.
I mean, I would say with drones and stuff, you ought to be able to do something. To rate the whole city.
Yeah, I wouldn't say it's impossible, but it's just, this was before you and a lot of the new council members. We had an unfunded mandate of five-year street paving. So, we're still trying to honor that, and I think this funding right now will put us in year four or five. So, as we, as the mayor noted, if we want to, you know, do a real shot in the arm when it comes to street paving or any type of public upgrade, we will have to go to the bond market. Then we can pretty much work on those new streets that are not in this five-year mandate.
Yes. Who mandated the five-year mandate?
It was before you, it was the city council.
Previous council and previous mayor.
So, we're bound by that?
I think we're, this administration is just trying to honor that street paving list that's already been vetted and rated.
And that list, that list went through a process. So, there was a process, and we didn't make up the list. The streets were graded, apparently it was the worst streets. The streets we haven't gotten to apparently are still the worst. But this is infrastructure, so I imagine streets have been added to the worst.
Yeah, because Spire's been out tearing up everybody's street.
Yes.
Oh, sorry, I shouldn't, rather, I take that back.
But thank you for that, that answer to that, because I know a lot of residents ask the same question. And of course, you've got a five-year plan, and now maybe the worst street is now just the second worst street, because the worst street was never paved, or hadn't been paved yet.
Yeah, and then you, listen, then, then there's just when we can pave, right? The elements and the weather is against us, and they've, they've been working miracles, y'all. They found time on some of these, I guess, warmer days, even in January, definitely in February, when they usually don't pave, to pave if they can keep projects going. So, getting monies out earlier than July 1 for paving streets lets us, like, expedite our ability before the fall/winter season to kick in, when the weather changes, and they're less likely to pave. This is, this is a win.
And that list is available at the?
Birminghamal.gov/streets?
Street paving.
Street paving.
Birminghamal.gov/street paving, the entire list.
And that is the list?
That is it, Birminghamal.gov/street paving.
Until you let us know when we can nominate new streets. So, my, my other question is, is this 10 million gonna just add to the open resurfacing contract that we have right now?
It will allow us to go ahead and, like the mayor said, go ahead and start bidding the projects out so we can get ahead of the game. As the weather starts to get warmer, we're able to pave much faster.
But we have a resurfacing contract that's open now, right?
Yes, I think the council approved, I would say, a couple of months ago.
Okay. And then on the rolling stock, I don't ever see street sweepers. And I'm just wondering, do we have them and do they run?
Yes, they run. The council approved, I think it was last year, for our leasing program, that we ordered a couple of street sweepers, of course, because of the supply chain issue that we've been having and going through. They are on the, on the ground. We can work with Mr. Roberts to make sure that you understand the schedule of the street sweepers. But of course, they usually sweep when a lot of us are asleep, so.
Okay. That's true. All right, those were your questions, Counselor, thank you. You finished. Counselor Moore, I'm gonna.
I was just trying to, oh.
Go ahead, no, go ahead.
Oh, you, okay, cool. Yeah, I was just gonna ask, so you said that this 10 million will put us at year four? Really? So, what year are we on now?
This will get us to four or five. Like, we were, when, when the mayor first took office, we were extremely behind. So, we had to make up for a year, almost a year, year and a half of just being behind on the list and trying to catch up. So, if we didn't invest a full 10 million every year, that actually rolls everything forward, which puts us in a further delay.
And I was just asking that, because I'm just like, would it be possible for us to put some more towards, you know?
I mean, Mr. Fowler, he always, and Mr. Edison always evaluates a lot of streets. Of course, if something comes undefunded on a particular street, we will reallocate those to something else.
And I have to ask, because I know that my residents will ask, you know, we had Jefferson Avenue that was supposed to have been done last year, so are you picking that back up?
It's on the queue, even before these dollars, yeah. It's, that's seasonal right there, we're just waiting on the season change.
All right. We won't get into the weeds on that.
Jefferson will be paved.
Thank you. All right, counselors, I'm gonna come back to you, Counselor Quinn, don't mind. Any counselors on this end with questions? Okay. You want to let you finish out?
Well, I just gotta say something about the street paving thing, because if you go to the website and you look at the street paving, it, it actually has, you know, the streets identified for up to 2022. And then there's, you know, some that are labeled, quote, "coming soon", which, you know, has no date attached to it. But in terms of the evaluation, you know, historically, the way that we have, have done it is based on the last time it got paved, which, you know, some streets in Birmingham is probably like 1935 or something. But anyway, so it's, it's like when it was last paved and then, you know, a visual inspection by the engineer. You know, prior to you coming on, the council, you know, I've encouraged our Transportation Department to actually take advantage of open data sources that use location services technology to actually identify which streets are the most heavily trafficked, you know, and put those on higher prioritization. That wouldn't be the only factor that would determine whether or not it gets paved, paved. But certainly, you know, we had a situation in my neighborhood where the one street, street that got paved in our neighborhood was a one-lane street. One block of a one-lane street. And in the meantime, you know, there was all of this other stuff in the neighborhood. It was clearly one of the least utilized streets in the neighborhood. And so, anyway, pet peeve. But on the, on the street paving list, you know, we, we need to talk about which ones are gonna be in 2023.
So. I just made a note to the two chiefs that. I just made a note to the two chiefs that, um, we'll engage Jane Fowler and make sure we tighten it up.
Related, um, we have been using Sherwin-Williams paint to paint the stripes on our street for a long time, and Mr. Fowler has been asking for a thermoplastic paint truck for a few years now.
I'm trying to delicately, um, answer this one, um, because we, we actually put that piece of equipment in last year's budget, and I think it was an issue, the supply chain issue, so we'll revisit that. Let's just say that, um, 'cause it was important, 'cause it was important for us to have it ready for the World Games also, as we had people coming into the city. Just allow us time to revisit that.
Okay. I'm good.
Thank you.
For now.
Um, Ms. Anne?
Counselor Porteen? Um, so my question, and really my comments are around the police. I do know they're part of this 5% COLA, but I have a personnel board question. Is there any way we can reclassify their jobs? Meaning, I know, uh, Chief Morris said they started back at step one, but I think if we take away step one for the police and start them out at a higher salary, I think that would help them out a lot.
So...
So what, so is, is that possible?
We're gonna get multiple answers on this. I'm gonna let Chad start. I want Ms. Madazik over HR to provide some context, and based on what they both say, I may add something to it that I've, I know I've shared at least, Madam President, and I think I may have shared it with Honor Williams.
And it was part two of the question. How long do, does it take for them to go through the steps? Because Counselor Taylor, I was trying to figure that out.
So I can definitely tell you, um, when they complete the academy, they immediately go to step two.
Okay.
Like, like, immediately. So they come in as a, as a trainee at this number, um, which, if you all approve this 5%, let me just pull it up. How about that? I have it right here.
I was gonna say, can you give us, I know you shared some information.
Yeah, I know.
I'm gonna get a copy of this and, and give this all to you all. Right, right now, 2022, um, the current, starting that step one, is 39,312. That's $39,312. When they, um, finish training, um, they immediately go to 41,288. With this 5% COLA, basically what you're doing is getting rid of that first step.
Okay.
Um, this 5% increase, this first step would be 41,277. Soon as they finish the academy, as soon as they complete the academy, they automatically go to 43,352.
That's it. No.
What's the county salary? Do y'all know? No?
We don't. Here's what we do know. They're sheriffs. They don't have the same budget. And, and I've shared this, Madam President, she's heard me say this, I think I've shared this with some of y'all, but I should say it publicly. It's tough. Our, we, 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 as in the community, they go into Jefferson County Personnel Board type, and if you want to be an officer, or you're already an officer, or if you're just looking at other cities that are part of Jefferson County Personnel Board, y'all, I promise you, it is literally an apples and oranges comparison. These other cities have, I think, Bessemer and Hoover are the only cities that got a little over 100, but neither one of them has 150. Everybody else has less than 100 officers. And so when they have that small of a police force, um, what they can, what they can and can't offer is different, especially even when you consider the long-term package we have, which is not just solving for the immediate, your check, but we solve for those things related to, again, your pension and longevity and merit and, um, insurance, et cetera. When you do that entire package, um, that's where we get into the overall, this is what we're providing for our employees, which is very different from these other cities who have smaller forces we're being compared to. But I, I know part of the conversation is getting rid of the first two steps. We've been entertaining that conversation. But by doing this, if you all vote on this, we definitely automatically get rid of the first step, and then soon as they become officers, they go to the second step at 43, 35, which the next step is 45.
Yeah, I think that would help out a lot with us retaining our officers, also recruiting our officers, because like I mentioned before, and, um, Counselor Williams, Counselor Taylor said this, we'll, we train some of the best officers, firefighters, and after a while, they take all that good training and they go to a different city. But Mr. Mayor, respectfully, we don't even have maybe even a half of what we need for a police force for a city our size. I'm just really, really concerned. I know you're doing the best you can. I just want to keep in the forefront, so make sure that we can still keep that plan and respect their wishes for what they're asked for, that, that are realistic.
Yeah, so it's important that I study and benchmark other cities that are comparable.
I agree.
Um, we know the news of Huntville becoming the largest city by population in the state. They have 100 more square miles than we have, so we have about 120 square, 120 square miles. They are literally at about 220, um, if my math's correct, yeah, 220 square miles. Have a larger, also have a larger population. Their police force is only 500. It's, it's, it's not the same. Everybody's call volume's not the same, everybody's square mile is not the same, everybody's, city's population's not the same. We, we gotta solve for what fits for Birmingham, and I know, Ms. Madazik, actually, this may be a good time for you to share what you've shared with the leadership team of the study you want to do, to make sure we are doing the best we can to protect our public safety employees and provide for them.
Thank you, Mayor.
You may want to take that.
Yeah. Not that short. Can you take, help her take her, help her cover it up?
Thanks.
So...
I think it is, yes.
So what I have suggested to the administration is we actually did some work with Bloomberg over the summer, and we looked at, um, what we would call sister cities. And what that study showed us was that while we may be lower at the entry level for police and fire because of our step and grade system, by the time they get to the end of their careers, they're on the high end of the range. So I have suggested that we do a more comprehensive study of police and fire, looking at specific cities that have similar demographics, have similar types of crime rates, have a similar population, to see where we compare relating to those entities, because we can't consider ourselves the same as Hoover or Homewood. The largest municipality in the county besides ours, I don't have a county number, but I know that of the other cities is 115 officers. So having 115 officers, you could definitely pay a lot more than when you have. Thank you. Thank you very much. I, I, I am hopeful that you will continue that study or strengthen that study, because we know, um, we've gone through the great resignation as part of COVID. I think the good thing that we do in the city of Birmingham is that our training is so adequate and that, um, our police officers are some of the best trained and, uh, most capable and, and able to, um, protect us. And, but that does start other municipalities from cherry picking on us, 'cause, um, as Ms. Madazik know, a, a large cost to a company is the onboarding and the training of new hires. And so if you can get an officer that's already fully trained, has that two, three years under their belt here in Birmingham, and they've seen all different types of, um, instances of, uh, calls and crime, then that does make it very palatable for another municipality to go and, um, make them an offer. So I would agree with our council as well, looking at those steps and also, uh, looking at any opportunities we have with the salary and the steps that we have. Thank you. Mr. Woods, did you have any questions?
Uh, yes, thank you very much, Madam President. I know I will say, since we're on the, uh, BPD topic, um, you know, one, there are a lot of benefits. One, like, 20-year retirement is something that's unique, uh, and I was running the numbers earlier, I got distracted, but I think this 5% would put us, like, right behind Mountain Brook ahead of Homewood, Trustful, Vestavia. And so I think we are competitive, getting to a competitive place on the actual salary, and now just try to look to, you know, what's the overall optimal number of officers? So, you know, like, World Games, we had COVID, you know, it was this tough situation, but a lot of them couldn't use vacation, things like that. Um, and then maybe like having 24-hour magistrates and so, there's a couple of other things, but the, the salary and packages, this 5% will put us in a, a good place as a city in addition to the 20-year retirement, which is just unheard of, and so that's really definitely a plus. Uh, we'll go back around, uh, to the recycling, I missed that, missed the recycling lap, um, but, and then don't throw anything at me if you feel the urge, but, um, almost looking at potentially having recycling drop-off locations in lieu of driving around, uh, picking up, uh, things and so. Uh, no, no, I'm saying where we actually have, like, a city truck or setup where you can drop off your plastic, and that way we have somebody there that's saying, no, we don't take glass, no, we don't take your deer carcass, um, and things like that, so. Uh, but I think that kind of creates some efficiency, because I, and I think 21% is probably pretty good. Like, I don't, I don't, I may be a pessimist, but, you know, I think if we gave everybody here a water bottle and they drunk it and we put a recycling can there, I don't know that, what the percentage would be that would end up in that recycle bin, so, um, you know, things like that. I will ask on the, the trash bins, how many, how many trucks do we have that'll be equipped to pick those up?
So with the current fleet that we have, we, we have retrofitted a, a number of the trucks that we have to do the, uh, one-arm, just the, the rear loader. Um, of course, I think I brought this up, um, the council approved the leasing program that we added more, uh, four more trucks to the, to the, um, to the fleet when it comes to the one-arm bandit, so we're just trying to take what we have and make it better. So that's why we're trying to use the funds that we have now before you to try and get more trucks on the ground to, to help in this effort.
Okay. And I guess I should ask this too, um, and I think you might have said it, but this, this gets us to, covers everybody in the city?
Yes, it does, but we gotta, you know, you know, I'll tell y'all everything in the sense that something like this, um, the leadership team has told me you can't give everybody a bin at the same time, kind of how we did the, um, how we did the City Hall, H-A-U-L program. I think in this standpoint, we have to, like, over-communicate and roll out, like, this is when you're, it starts for your route, to make sure from an education standpoint, attached to, um, what you have, Madam, with the bill and everything, so people can know we're not picking it up if it's not in this bin. Um, this is when you'll receive your bin. If, to Ms. Clark's point, or I forgot, somebody on this side asked, I made that point, if something happens to your bin, you're responsible for the second one. If you have a significant amount of refuge, um, this first one is free, so you can pay for a second, and stuff like that. So we have to get that part right, um, if you all approve this.
And just let me ask, I know you're on your questions, Mr. Woods, but I do want to ask, so what is the percentage of the current households that are part of the pilot and that you may be able?
We have a total of 28 routes. We have a total of 28 routes.
Okay.
For the whole city, and I think the current pilot, um, we've expanded it to now it's only, it touches five routes only. So there are 23 routes. Um, these uniform trash bins are not on, but, um, Mr. Chairman over here of Transportation, he's saying something through his smile, I don't know what he's saying.
Well, I, I, I mean, we, Counselor Smithman especially, um, we've been asking this question, you know, we need, we wanted an update on the City Hall program, and, you know, we started with those two routes, um, but I can't tell you what the other three are, because we haven't had any updates since that first, that initial pilot was rolled out with the two routes. So, um...
So could we maybe put that on our agenda for, um, the next, committee of the whole, or could we get that information out?
We can. Listen, uh, or I can give you a written update before this week's out. What do you prefer?
You can actually do a PIC meeting, which is next Tuesday.
We can do that too. I did, I wanna, um, chiefs, let's make sure we give the council an update for the PIC meeting.
Thank you. And also to piggyback on, uh, Mr. Woods' question, is some of this rolling stock includes, uh, being able to, uh, refit or retrofit some of the trucks or these new trucks that each one of these trucks will come?
These are brand-new trucks.
Okay.
Um, I think we're, we're done with the retrofitting, we just need the actual...
Let's get the real thing.
Get the real thing and get it moving.
Real thing.
All right, thank you. Anything else, Mr. Woods? I'm sorry.
Yes, Madam President. I will always give you a moment of my time should you need it. Um, all right, so, kind of in shifting and, and also with the pilot piece that we've seen, uh, I think it kind of creates a need for more enforcement around trash bin on the ground where there'd be littering, dumping. And I'm gonna ask, like, I don't, like, we, we don't have to try to get everybody, but we need to make some examples out of some people so that, that you know that you're risking getting some sort of, uh, punishment if you're just out here dropping, 'cause, you know, I had, uh, in Huffman this week, I think they picked up trash and brush on Friday. They came, it was a pile that had grown, they came and got it Saturday. Like, somebody rolled out there, dropped off some, uh, new stuff, and so we gotta get to where, 'cause I know a lot of, some people are just gonna do it, but a lot of people would, would stop if there was enforcement on littering, 'cause, you know, people gonna do it, they can get away with it in a lot of cases, and so that's something I would ask, to where we could just have some people we can point to that we have held accountable for that littering or dumping.
Um, Mr. Mayor, I know that the, the complicated part is the legal side of it, is that you have to have certain evidence, and that was, don't be a dummy campaign that was encouraging it, 'cause you, it's almost like hearsay if you just say, I saw Mr. Mayor illegal dump. Well, where's the evidence?
It does, but I think there is part of what Counselor's saying is, you know, y'all have seen the emails caught doing good. I think we want to catch people doing bad. I think even if we can't, um, do anything legally, uh, hold them accountable, hold them accountable legally, um, people tend to embarrass us as a community by being nasty. Maybe we should embarrass them back and, like, show the community this person was caught doing bad and show it.
And also the other piece is sometimes people don't know where to put all their trash. That's another thing, too.
And hold them accountable? Um, all right. I'll also share my time with you as well anytime. Um, all right, so you mentioned kind of a, a timetable on rollout. What, how do you envision that? Is that a 12-month, 24-month on actually, like, implementing the, the, yeah, how do you get, how long does it take to get citywide?
Well, that's, it's, once we get the funding, I know our first step is go ahead and start ordering things and make sure we can get them on the ground. Um, we already have the quote for the actual bins, which is the actual $7 million for 100,000, uh, trash bins. So that allows us time to develop a type of phasing in mechanism, so we'll take a certain section of the city and, you know, phase that in with the trucks and everything. Also with the funds, we, we need to go ahead and order the trucks now, because we don't know how long that would possibly take. So that could be a, you know, 12 to 18-month period before we have new trucks on the ground, but we're comfortable enough with the leasing program that we know that we have four new units that'll probably hit the ground pretty soon, so it'll be a constant rotation of just new equipment. So gives us, give us time to develop a plan, so we can over-communicate that to the public, and we'll have that, um, that program rolling.
I think, and Counselor Woods, um, I would honestly, sir, Josh Yates comes before PIC if people's schedule permit to show up and dig deeper and ask any more questions you want, including asking out when to see, he's not here today, but, um, I think we can get you more of a detail into that question, because you want to know a timeline. You said, I heard you say six months to a year.
Yeah, I was just asking at the rollout, um...
It will be, it will be some extended time.
Okay. And so almost looking at maybe increasing potentially the number of trucks, basically looking at it from that point of view, that...
Yes, sir.
That slide and scale. Another question is around, uh, the paving, like, kind of like, and so it's hard looking at these things in pieces, 'cause we got the budget coming, we got the surplus, uh, you got ARP, and so I know typically we've had this $10 million piece in street pay or in the budget, and so kind of looking at that to see maybe what replaces that in the budget, or we, we look to increase our investment. And so kind of looking at that to see maybe what replaces that in the budget or we, we look to increase our investment in the budget. So it's kind of hard taking it one at a time, but didn't know kind of what the intent was there, if there was some room to, um.
Yeah. So can, can, yeah, that's a, so that's a great question. Consider the COLA. Um, um, COLAs would technically start 90 days ahead if my math is correct. Oh, actually you, if you all approve it, then if the count, and then if the Jefferson County Personnel Board approves it, then it has to come back to the finance department. That's a process, right? So that wouldn't immediately start in April. So let's just say in the best case scenario, um, enough pay periods in May and June. So that's, that's, uh, instead of at 12 months, July 1 of, of, to, of 2022 to June 30th of 23, it will start at some point in April, right? So it's 14 months instead of 12. I consider the street paving the same. We wouldn't come back to you for the general fund. Now you asked what it'd be replaced with. I got these guys in the lab, um, figuring out all the needs, um, as much as possible that we can solve for. Things we weren't able to solve for last year, things that need an increase this year, et cetera. They haven't presented me anything. So truthfully before you and in front of your colleagues in the public, I don't have an answer for that because I don't know. Uh, but, um, if we're coming back to you with street paving, it's probably a, a, a strike package, um, for infrastructure issues that would probably also include stormwater. That would include fire stations, that would include possibly parks and rec centers. Um, and that would be going for the bowling market, which we don't know when we would bring that before you, because I would want to talk to you first to see what issues you have in your individual districts and collectively as a city first.
Boom. Um, and then this last thing, I, I may be off on this, but the, the World Games, I know we heard, I heard it. I know they presented it and they presented it to all of us. So this, this never went to full council as far as doing any funding for that additional request from the World Games.
Yes.
They presented it, I think last month's committee of the whole.
Right. But it never, it never went to full council.
No.
May by approval?
Right. This was our first chance of a funding source to, uh, out of that commitment that I think the council was in favor of, so.
Ask your question, sir?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
All right.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Counselor Tate or Counselor Williams, you have any questions? Counselor Tate?
You all have, thank you, Madam President, have really answered pretty much everything. Cause one of the things that I was gonna ask, what Counselor Park pointed out is, where are the street sweepers? Cause I hadn't saw them in a long, long time. I remember seeing them a lot when I was growing up. And so I really think that that would really help a lot. Um, you know, in these communities seeing leaves, you know, mounted to the curb stone and, and the water can't go anywhere. And then it presents standing water that stayed there for, you know, for a day. So Counselor Clark raised that. And I was very interested in where are the street sweepers? So, um, so pretty much looked like with paving and recycling, I think it's Counselor Smithman and so many others alluded to. And you, Ms. Park, where Woodfin is, it's gonna take education. Cause as you stated, my mom is 75 years old. So that'll be like, Mom, give me your plastic water bottle so I could recycle it. Cause she's just throwing in trash can. So that's a matter of, um, you know, educating, um, you know, old habits, you know, and getting them to come into, you know, new habits. And, and just really wanted to, um, thank you and your team, um, and the audit team for, um, the sur, the surplus money. So we can, you know, uh, be able to, um, present the, uh, the 5% increase. Cause the Birmingham Police Department, our frontline workers and city employees, everybody worked very, very hard. I know, um, you know, being in law enforcement myself, what that looks like going out every day. You know, hoping to be safe and making back home and, and know what fatigue, how fatigue sets in and, and morale goes down. And, and so you get, you know, knocked the full expectation out of, you know, a, a individual. Um, and so I think this, you know, this is a, a great step, uh, towards, um, you know, public safety and getting with the personnel board, getting this approved. So I did have this final question. I know we talked about the grade, um, for the BPD. And if I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, it's a 17 with 10 steps correct. And so what I'm curious to know, cause I've worked for the merit system before is, and I know every year I got a step increase. And so that was like for me, my supervisor evaluated me, giving me my step increase and a cost of living came with that. And so what I'm curious to know, if we have a grade 17 and we have 10 steps, why aren't the people graduating to the steps? Or is this something that has to be, um, included in the budget every year?
So Chaz and Kevin and Cedric, if I'm, if I miss anything, please let me know if I need to add anything. You can jump in. First thing I'll start at a high level, just by saying that, uh, separate from individuals base pay, everything else is a fringe benefits. So you use the word step, we use merit. We put in a 5% every year, but it's not guaranteed. And it's, it's usually based on two things, yeah, everybody, like, and these two things happen, happen. Um, the one is very simple, which is, it's your start date every year. So it's not July 1. If, if you, if, if you started December 31st of that year, it doesn't kick in until December 31st. So that's one. But two, it's performance based. Right. We put it in, we budget for it, like it's in. But you as the employee have to perform and your supervisor has to check off, check down, whatever word you want to use to say, yes, you're, based on your performance, you qualify, deserve this boom. Um, and so those are the two requirements. Chaz, Kevin, Cedric, am I missing anything? Did I?
No, he.
Isaac, did I miss anything?
The mayor, he hit it, but, um, the third one is just make sure that we, we fund it. Cause that's the, that's the biggest part of the merit is if we fund it, then the, the employees get the benefit of it. If we don't fund it, then it just stays as it is.
Which prior to our administration, apparently there were some years where it wasn't funded. Just it wasn't funded. So.
Thank you. Does that answer the question for you, Counselor?
Cause I was curious, you know, to vote, um, and you answered it, Mayor Woodfin, um, you know, what is your response?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
What I, I'm gonna make sure, um, Mr. Mitchell gives y'all a copy of this. You see that it's public series, public safety series grades, which, current steps, um, start at 39, end at 61, all the way to 10. So that's 39,000 to 61,000. But with what, if y'all pass this, um, the steps will be from 41,000 to 64,000. So on the low end, that's a almost 2,000 raise. On the high end, that's a $3,000 raise. So that's two to $3,000 raise based on what step you're on.
Counselor Williams?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I want to clarify something, um, that I, I just want to clarify this. The $10 million in street resurfacing, that is not to get a head start on this upcoming year's street resurfacing. So we can expect to see an additional $10 million in this upcoming fiscal year budget.
I don't believe so. Uh, uh, let me see if I can say this. And Kevin, you can correct me if I'm wrong. This 10 million is a jump start, just like the COLA is a jump start, if that makes any sense. It's in the immediate instead of waiting to July 1. So with our surplus funding, um, it's technically 20 million before June 30th. If you approve it with that 10 million spread out over the next, my math is correct, this would be 15 months.
So how, wait, whoa, whoa, hold on, hold on.
The second 10.
The second?
You approve 10 July 1 of, you, you approve 10 July 1 of this current fiscal year we end, which ends in three months.
Yeah.
If you all approve this, we're adding another 10 million.
Okay. So, so, okay. So it's a total of 20.
For this, yes.
For this, for this fiscal year.
Yes, with the second 10 spread out over 15 months instead of, instead of kicking in July 1 for 12 months only. Does that make sense?
Yeah. But then on this upcoming budget that's going to be presented to us, do we anticipate there also being $10 million in resurfacing?
No, sir.
So then it's not really an extra 10, it's just 10 that's spread out.
Over 15.
Different months.
Spread out over 15 instead of 12.
Okay.
Am I saying that right?
Yes.
I may not be saying that right. So.
Thank you for asking that question.
Clearly.
Because I think there's a misunderstanding.
I, I was anticipating us doubling down.
No, you, you are correct, Mayor. But one of the things I do want to make sure that the council is prepared and Mayor you is. Well, we are working, just remember. Funds. See, oh, I'm sorry. We're gonna look at those different accounts to see how much money is in there to add to it. So we'll have a presentation for you on that. But it won't be 10 million. So we're gonna try to add additional based on those funds. We'll be able to tell you during the budget presentation with that.
So, so, so part of the question came, um, cause you know, I ain't gonna give you no razzle dazzle, man. I'm gonna shoot it straight with you. I'm gonna shoot it straight with all of y'all. Part of the question came to me where like the needs never stop, right? So big picture, the needs are always here. We try to get before y'all mid-May to approve a budget July 1 to satisfy those needs over every 12 months, July 1 to June 30th. We get a surplus like this, well, I got excited like y'all got excited. I was like, cool. What's the immediate? The immediate, the immediate is literally, um, our employees and World Games, right? Um, and I've been consistent in that. And then everything else, what you see is consistent requests we've received. And then one of these is, two of these are getting ahead. Cost of living because it's there and our employees deserve it now. They shouldn't have to wait to July 1 and the street paving. So sure, let's just separate the two 10, two 10s. If this surplus didn't exist, you know, this general fund, I would easily come before you and say, hey, just like we've been doing every year that we can do it, we want to do 10. But with surplus, I'm like, why wait? Let's do it now. That's how I'm presenting it to you. No razzle dazzle. Did I clarify?
Yes.
You clarified, but I think you also sort of displayed it. Our desire to try to get a, to go out there and pave the streets that we know need paving. And so I think, I'm gonna say, I think I'm getting this general consensus.
Y'all want more money for street paving out of general fund as well?
We would like to see a budget that includes, um.
Street paving and general fund.
Pave our streets. Yes. Yes. So if you would keep that in your, as you all go through and decide and determine about the budget.
Chief Morris said, we're still developing the budget. So if we see areas where we can potentially add more street paving, we will. I think he noted of the fuel tax is a funding source. I think Senator Smithman was able to help us with that. So I think we have opportunity, just allow us, we're still in the process of crunching the numbers.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Williams?
Um, no, that was my main question is.
Can I, can I offer a follow up?
Yeah, sure.
So in the media, you know, they're reporting that there's a proposed additional 5% raise in the new fiscal year.
That's easily, that's easily clarified. So again, um, our language is consistent. Um, they picked up what we sent to the employees. What we said is that prior to this fiscal year ending, because of the surplus, we will make a record, we're making a recommendation, recommendation to each of you all of 5% for a cost of living adjustment prior to the current fiscal year ending. So you started July 1 with 3% cost of living adjustment for the fiscal year ends. We're gonna kick in an additional five. Um, that carries us into the next fiscal year as well. Separate from that, um, when a new fiscal year comes, like we've done every year, I guess with the, with the exception of the budget, um, the COVID budget, we're recommending to each of you all a 5% merit increase, which is the number you see in those step increases every year. And then we'll be recommending to the, this council as well, like what we've done every year is longevity pay as well. Though for those things start July 1, which we've always done as far as recommending to you.
The approximate cost of which would be roughly $10 million or a little better maybe.
Yeah. So I, you know, I don't forget what the number is, but every year we do some whiteboard session and there is cool. Like here's a line, tell me what's the additional cost of COLA 1, merit 2, longevity 3. And I think all three combined, it's always what, nine to 11 million? Seven to 11, something like that.
See where your money's going?
Yeah. Um, all right.
What, to employees?
I'm, I'm, I'm just trying to, you know, there's always gives and takes, right? So if you're giving, you know, additional pay, employees pay, pay raises, then that's less streets that gets paid, you know, it's just, it's budgeting 101. I mean.
Well, here's the deal. I, I think the 10 of us are on the same page. Let me, let me, let me say that. I think we run an enterprise, y'all. I mean, and there are, I won't say necessarily competing needs, it's just go back to the dollar, right? He told you. And, and the best fiscal year we can have, we spend 78 cent on internally on our employees. That is 22, my math is correct. That's 22 cent left for external. It's not a lot. Those things don't compete. We just know that we pay a premium for our frontline people that provide services. But within that 78 cent, they don't look at it as a whole, the way we have to in, in stewarding the, an entire enterprise in a full budget. They want more. Truthfully, they deserve more. The question becomes, how do you do it? Which brings back to your two words, give and take. We're in a season where everybody, nobody wants to give up anything. People want what they want. Citizens deserve what they want, which is street paving as well. I promise y'all, we're literally just trying to figure it out and strike a balance because, even with all the federal money coming in the world, we still don't have all the dollars to do everything we want. Cause if we did, there would be no stormwater issues. There would be no pothole issues. Um, there would be no vehicle issues for any of the departments. And everybody can get whatever pay raise they wanted as well, but we can't print money. So I, I, I hope I responded to a way that the administration is trying to strike a balance and we bring before you, not squeaky wheel. The team really does a great job of saying, this is where the give and take should be. So when he says, when he says it won't be 10, he's being honest. He doesn't know if he can come back for 10 because we may have to try to find something else for transportation. We want to keep expanding via that's now additional millions separate from offer money. I mean, it's just, it's, it's a lot of things we have to consider for the entire enterprise. Um, that's 78 cent one internally and 22 cent externally.
Thank you, Mayor.
So I'm gonna make a generic comment as just more of a public request. And while we are running a, uh, a complex enterprise and have the largest municipal budget um, in the state of Alabama, I do think that when, um, when, when, when we, and this is, I'm, I'm not suggesting that, that you and I are not on the same page on this, cause I think we are. And actually I know we are because we've knocked on doors together all throughout the east side of Birmingham and you all throughout Birmingham. Um, but I think that the citizens of Birmingham want to have the basics done really well. When I talk about the basics, I mean, police, fire, public works, infrastructure. And I would say it, schools, but the school board is, you know, is, is separate in, in the way that the Alabama state law sets us up. But I know that the citizens that I represent in large want the best of the basics. And so that looks like street resurfacing infrastructure. That looks like stormwater infrastructure. But it also looks like, uh, picking up the phone and dialing non. it also looks like picking up the phone and dialing 911 and having a paramedic or a BPD officer respond in a reasonable amount of time. And so I think that, well, first of all, thank you for the 5%, because that speaks to the basics, and we absolutely have to be more competitive to fill all of our public safety positions, whether it be police, fire, or public works, which I include in public safety. But the overall goal of maintaining a decent infrastructure for Birmingham, I do think that it's imperative that we try to get to $10 million a year every single year. And so it's not, and I know we're on the same page, because I know that we've knocked on doors together, but I do think it's important that we talk about that and that, that I at least publicly speak to that. Because what happened for so long in Birmingham, where we didn't have a dedicated funding source from our general fund, is where, you know, we found ourselves five years ago with a, with, you know, hundreds of millions of dollars of infrastructure needs and us throwing $10 million a year at it. And so I am very hopeful that we can, with whatever way possible, look at this upcoming fiscal year having $10 million. 10, 10, 10, $10 million. Because, you know, we're talking about this fiscal year. This is the, this is the excess in this fiscal year. So I'm talking about next fiscal year also, which, which we realize means that that street resurfacing would happen the following summer and not in this fiscal year. But anyway, thank you very much for the proposals you made to the council, because it does get back at making sure that we are doing a good job of the basics. And, and I think the citizens want that. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. I believe, Mr. Wood, you asked for...
Yeah, just real quick. You know, I think, I mean, it speaks to the give and take, the needs that, you know, you got way more needs and resources available to fill those needs. And so you gotta try to find a balance between an efficient allocation of scarce resources. But I think we got to zoom out too and look at why is this surplus here? And a lot of that is because we cut our budget and who was it that had to take the brunt of that cut? And that was employees. And so I think now, you know, some difficult decisions were made, but I think they all were made in the intention of, when we can, we'll try to balance that back out. And I think we have opportunity where we can now. I think we committed, I think even being able to commit $10 million a year as armed, I guess I'll speak for myself, but armed, me and speaking to residents to say, hey, look, we're committing consistently to putting dollars into road paving. You will see roads getting paved in your district every year. And so I don't want to go, you know, I think there are some opportunities, I think specifically to the fuel tax dollars, but, you know, I don't want to go too scorched earth to try to double up, you know, when I think we have some, some things we needed to make right in general. And I think we got the opportunity to do that. And I just want to try to zoom out a little bit and look at it from that perspective of how we got to the surplus that should be it. Because this big of a surplus isn't normal and hopefully won't happen again, but.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, do you want to respond to that? Because I believe you've sort of heard us in general.
No response. I'm gonna keep talking to everybody. Yes, ma'am. I see what everybody's saying.
Okay.
No pushback.
Thank you. Yes, we do. Counselors, at this time, I would like to ask that we call for a vote on item numbers, whatever, and go with it. You have a, wait a minute, Counselor. You have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? I believe we discussed this in nauseam.
Can I just, real quick, real quick? I want to be the next person in line to give you a hard time about this, you know, for scheduling the budget hearings while we're out of town. So, I say that in jest, but anyway.
I know, so I'm saying, let's be fair.
All right.
We chose to go to those meetings.
There is a solution. And I mentioned this to Chaz, and it was actually suggested by Counselor Clark, that if each department would provide a budget narrative, you know, typically what we get, what we see is a spreadsheet from each department. And unless you're in those budget hearings, you don't get to hear the department head giving the explanation, justifying why they're asking for what they're asking. So in lieu of us being able to attend a budget hearing, if they would provide a written narrative, just explaining their budget request, that would go a long ways towards making up for us not being able to attend those budget hearings.
Yes, sir. Madam President, if I may, may give a brief response to
Yes.
Counsel Dr. Quinn's request. We can honor that. We will give you the, we can give a written summary. But I hope you all can appreciate, only if your schedule permits, because I'm pretty sure that's way more efficient with your time. But if you have time, we intentionally recorded the actual hearings. So at your leisure, only if you have time to go back and ask.
Four days. I don't have four days.
I got you.
And we can access those from the Finance Department page?
Yes, we're working to make it more efficient. So if you wanted to hear a specific department, you can just listen to that department. You wouldn't have to sit through four days of hearings, just click on whatever.
That would be helpful to get that. And remember, Counselors, we do have a motion and a vote on the table.
Yes.
Yes.
Before we vote on spending $53 million in surplus, general fund surplus.
It's not all 53.
Not all 53.
Okay, I know.
Thank you.
But we're gonna do a, we're gonna do a big chunk of the 53. You know, we have a big need in downtown Birmingham for that bridge. And I know we're not talking about fixing the bridge, but I would like to know how we plan to fix the bridge.
And can we, can I just allow him to follow up with you on that?
Yeah, I'm not really asking
Those details right now?
Today, but I'm just saying, this is a big, we have a big, we have a big surplus right now. And that's a big funding need. And while we're gonna use most of this today on the spending proposals before us, I do think we need some ideas on how that, how...
So, Madam President, you want to vote and then I respond? Or you want me to respond to that now? Whatever your pleasure.
I'd like for us to vote and then respond.
If you may reserve a response, I will respond to that.
All right, we'll respond. Okay, Counselors, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposers? Thank you. That particular item passes, and now we'll get Mayor's response. And let me, let's know what happens as a result.
Are you okay with the addendum for tomorrow so we can meet our deadline with the Personnel Board?
Yes, I'm very in favor of that. And Ms. Kidd, would we be able to work with them on that addendum?
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam President. So Ms. Clark's question, I did do some homework after you sent me that text. That is a price tag of a minimum of $40 million. And so there are multiple, there are two thoughts here. Thought one is to continue to flush this out from a process standpoint, acknowledging that it will require some significant match from us. All right? So we wouldn't get 100% of that 40 million from the state and federal government. The city of Birmingham would be required to do a significant amount of that match. We don't know what that number is. We do know we would have to work with the state, because that's pass-through money from the federal infrastructure dollars. And I actually heard the Director of Transportation actually speak to, he actually said that in a meeting with five of the Secretaries of the President, which included Secretary Pete Buttigieg in Selma, Alabama, a few weeks back. So I heard that from Secretary's mouth as, I mean, as from the John Cooper's mouth, as he talked about certain priorities across the state. He talked about this bridge. But we need alignment, like local alignment, from the standpoint of, I want you to know how my thought process works, and you've never heard me say this out loud, but this is a good time to say it, since you brought it up. I struggle with, I struggle with a bridge that's literally less than half a mile costing $40 million, when we just talked about a street paving plan for the entire city of 50. And so the question becomes of, not just ingress egress, of getting people from north to south in our city, but with other bridges available. And when we closed that bridge down for 10 days even prior to this, this safety issue, was there still an ease of flow north to south in our city? Were the complaints high? Was it crazy that people lose their minds? The answer is no, no, no. So the question becomes, we are in the process of attempting to answer the question, or ask the question first, and then proceed with getting an answer. Is that bridge still needed for vehicular traffic to connect north and south? We don't have the answer yet. If it is needed, then that's a significant cost that's going, that's gonna eat into other stuff y'all want, because that's gonna require a significant amount of money from us. Very different from the federal highway that was right here. We gotta participate in that at a significant cost. So that's question one. Or two, if it's not needed, what are you converting to? Should we ask that ourselves, or should we get a third-party person to do some research for us at a, at a significant cost and make recommendation to us on the best use?
A skate park, no.
I'm gonna answer that yes, because I'm one of those people who uses that bridge every day, because our law office is literally right over the bridge. And then because of road work, it's not convenient, this way.
Yes, but I want, I want, I want everybody to think, think about our downtown as a grid. At a certain point, and I know, Madam President, you can cut me off at any point, this is your meeting, and I know you want to get out of here, it's late. We created, we created our streets, one way is to get people in and out. The, we did, we did for avenues and streets. And when you look at 24th, that's a two-way bridge. And if you look at what's happened with Richard Arrington, just think about what's happened with Richard Arrington on ends. It's a one-way coming from the south side, after Vulcan, it splits, it becomes a one-way. Then, but at a certain point, though, we forget, once you cross over Abraham Woods, it's a two-way. And I remember people freaking out in that little small section of a two-way. But what if that two-way was continued? So now it's not just 24th, but that's on 20...
22nd.
22nd. What if it's the same for Richard Arrington? I know we want to get out of here at 5, I know we want to come in at 8. But what if it's the same? What, what if? And I'm expanding thought now, I'm just talking to you. But Second Avenue and 20th Street is a two-way now, and we've made that more pedestrian-friendly. We automatically make our streets safer with two ways versus one way. And then they become more pedestrian-friendly from the standpoint of supporting our small businesses as well. And so we just be considering all of that when we thinking about the easiest and fastest way to get people in and out of our city by supporting more two-way streets. That lends more support to our businesses that continue to grow in our downtown. So please consider that when you're thinking about the bridge, if that makes sense, that from north to south, you still got 24th. If you convert 22nd, you still got north-south. Right, today, you still got, if I'm correct, 20th and 19th and 18th and 14th. And so there's still numerous ways to do north-south. So just a thought.
Madam President, in light of us having all day scheduled tomorrow, including a public hearing together, I'm making motion we adjourn today.
All of them, please say aye.